It is six o'clock. I will call the January twenty-fifth, twenty twenty-two meeting of the With County Board of Supervisors to order. I'll note we do have a quorum. Ms. Lawson is absent, and I believe we have Mr. Terry joining us by telephone. Mr. Terry?
Yes, sir, Mr. Chairman, all.
Per our rules of procedure, without, unless I hear any objection, his admittance to the meeting is guaranteed. Hearing none, we'll move on. Tonight, we have Pastor Rick Lindemuth of the West End United Methodist Church to provide our invocation. If you would, please stand or remain standing for the Pledge of Allegiance. Pastor Lindemuth.
Thank you, sir. Appreciate the invitation to be here tonight, and I ask you to excuse me as I have a Bible study immediately following this and not be able to stay for the meeting.
Yes, sir. Thank you for coming.
Yes, sir. Let us pray together. O mighty God, we humbly ask for your guidance tonight for the men and women of the With County Board of Supervisors. We are aware of the difficult challenges that our elected leaders and governing officials face during this time of coronavirus pandemic and political and social unrest. We acknowledge our human frailty and limitations. We know that we must depend upon you, O God. Therefore, we cry out to you that tonight and all through the new year twenty twenty-two, you would grant wisdom and understanding, courage, and compassion to this governing body. May your unseen hand of grace, your blessings and approval permeate and rest upon all that is done here tonight and throughout the year. God bless America, the Commonwealth of Virginia, and God bless With County. In Jesus' name, amen.
Amen.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with no need and justice for all.
First item on the agenda is Citizens Time. Ms. Collins, have anybody signed up? Don't have anybody signed up for Citizens Time, so we'll move on to the payment of invoices. Members, have you all received invoice package in your board pack? Entertaining motion to approve the invoices as presented?
So moved.
Have a motion by Mr. Cook. Do I have a second?
Second.
Have a second by Mr. Burnett, which we'd like to welcome to his first meeting. Is there any invoice any members would like to pull out and discuss? Hearing none, we'll do a roll call vote. Mr. Terry, I'll start with you.
Yes, sir, Mr. Chairman, aye.
This way or that way?
Go ahead, Mr. Cook.
Aye.
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 So approved. I forgot we moved seats. Sorry about that. Next item is approval of our minutes from our previous meeting from January eleventh, twenty twenty-two. Entertaining motion to approve those minutes.
So moved.
Have a motion by Mr. Smith. Do I have a second?
Second.
Have a second by Mr. Horni. Is there any corrections to the minutes as presented? Hearing none, we'll do a roll call vote. Mr. Horni?
Aye.
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 Mr. Terry? Did you get that, Ms. Collins?
Okay.
Next item on the agenda is old business. We have some appointments. Mr. Bear?
On the Mount Rogers Planning District Commission, we are working with them on the appointees that are there, and hope to have a recommendation at the next meeting for you all to consider on it. We do have a name to the surface for the New River Resource Conservation and Development Council. And I'll turn that over to whoever would like to make that nomination.
I'll make the nomination of Nate Akers.
Have a nomination for Mr. Nate Akers for the Highlands, New River Highlands Resource Conservation and Development Council. Do I have a second?
Second.
Have a second by Mr. Smith. Is there any questions or discussion? Hearing none, all those in favor signify by saying aye?
Aye.
Any opposed? Congratulations, Mr. Akers. Anything else?
The other one is on the Planning Commission, and that is your appointment, Mr. Burnett. I don't know if you're ready to make an appointment on that position or not.
I have talked to Mr. Walt. He is looking forward to serving another term, and I would make that recommendation on him for another term.
Have a motion by Mr. Burnett to reappoint Mr. Walt to the Planning Commission. Do I have a second?
Second.
Have a second by Mr. Smith. Is there any questions or discussion? Hearing none, all those in favor signify by saying aye?
Aye.
Any opposed? Congratulations, Mr. Walt. How long has he been on the Planning Commission?
Ooh, I would think maybe this is his fourth term, or eight, or third term, one or the other. Oh, nine, okay. Anything else under appointments, Mr. Bear? Uh, no, sir.
Anybody else have any appointments? All right, anything else under old business?
I do not have any items, sir.
Move on to reports. Have a treasurer report, Ms. Gwynn.
Hello. Okay. I feel like it's been a long time since I've been here. A lot changes in two months. Okay, in your financial report that was sent to you in your board packet, the consolidated account contains a balance as of December thirty-first of seventy-five million one hundred sixty-one thousand seven hundred seventy-eight dollars, and in that, the general fund is comprised of fifty million eight hundred twenty-five thousand nine hundred and nine dollars. So, a lot of that, that increase is going to be contributed to the tax collections through December. We have finished working all the mail. We have everything posted, so a lot of our collections did carry over into January, so you'll see increases on your January report as well as far as cash flow and all of that. But we are officially caught up as of last week, finally, and as of yesterday, our collections thus far for what we've built for twenty twenty-one, we're at an average of ninety-one and a half percent, and that's real estate and personal property combined. So thus far, everything that's come in, we're, we're in good shape, so people are continuing to pay each day. Not too much, I don't know whether to say backlash or what term to use as far as now charging the fee for the credit cards. Everyone seems to be understanding of that, and they just kind of go along with it and go ahead and pay it. So we've had a few people that have made comments, but other than that, a few have opted to still come into the office and pay cash or check instead of paying the fee. But for the most part, all that seems to be going well on our end in our office, so. But that's pretty much all that I have for tonight. I don't have a whole lot for you guys. Any questions? You look like you were reading hard, so I feel like you were coming up with something.
No, you know, you told me y'all are a few days behind on processing and Dropbox payments, but I think y'all, you watched me drop mine.
I told you, we have a camera on that box, and we're looking for you.
It left my account by the end of the day.
We, we monitor that box. We, we're looking for you, so that way when you drop it in, we know to go ahead and get that check, because we don't want it to be a Goodyear check or anything like that.
Does anybody have any questions for Ms. Gwynn?
Okay.
And I'm, I'm sure you talked to several of us, but again, we extend our sympathy for your loss. Thank you, Lord.
Thank you, Lord.
Moving on to new business, we have our consent calendar. Entertaining motion to approve the consent calendar as presented.
So moved.
Have a motion by Mr. Cook. Do I have a second?
Second.
Have a second by Mr. Smith. Is there any questions or discussion? Hearing none, we'll do a roll call vote. Mr. Terry?
Aye.
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 So approved. Next item is Parks and Recreation. Mr. Kevin Williams.
All right, I'd like to thank y'all for allowing me to come in tonight to, in order to recognize two very dedicated volunteers within the rec department, I'd like to first state that, as many of you are aware, that With County Sports Program is heavily reliant on our community youth booster clubs. And unlike more traditional rec departments, With County does not take up registrations or find volunteers for our leagues. It's structured that each individual booster club is our individual entities, and they work cooperatively with, with County to put on their sports programs. Amanda Goins and Brandy Jones have each led their respective booster clubs for at least five or more years. This year, they both told me that they plan to step down from their positions and move forward as their children have grown and are aging out of the rec leagues. They will be missed as, because they've shown a lot of dedication, flexibility, and leadership and a passion for our sports program, and they ensure that each child have a fair and equal opportunity to play. They both know the benefits children have when they participate in organized sports. I know that both Brandy and Amanda have sacrificed many hours and days to do a multitude of tasks to keep their youth leagues running. From late nights of collecting registrations to early mornings of lining ball fields, scrounging and begging for volunteers to help coach or run concession stands. They make sure that there is funding enough for uniforms and to pay for those kids that can't afford the registration fees. They are prime examples of the heart of our league. I also need to throw in that their families have also been a critical part of their success, because I'm sure that these ladies have each volunteered their families to help out at times. So I don't want to forget about them. They have also made my job easier, because they are the front line of dealing with, let's say, parents' urgent concerns. They also help enforce the policies set forward by the rec department. They have also kept myself and our sports coordinator in check by letting us know how our rules and regulations are perceived by the participants, and they would like, they also let us know about goals they'd like to see coming out of the rec department. Working with these ladies over the years have been great, because in the end, we have accomplished the ultimate goal of providing opportunities for With County kids to thrive and succeed within our sports programs. So I'd like to formally introduce and invite up each of these volunteers to receive our initial Making a Difference Award. So please join me as I invite Brandy Jones of the Sheffy Youth League and Amanda Goins of the Max Meadows Youth League. I have a plaque for each of you. It has your name, and in recognition of years of service, dedicated leadership, and personal giving to your respective youth league and With County Parks and Rec. So Amanda, Goins, and Brandy Jones?
Thank you, Kevin.
Ladies, on behalf of the board, I'd like to say thank you. I, I don't know that I can add anything that Kevin left out, especially the volunteer, your family. I'm sure they dedicated many hours, too, and we extend our thanks to them, but I hate to hear that you're moving on, and fortunately, that happens when kids get older. But once they graduate high school, come on back, Kevin, we'll have a spot for you. Thank you, Kevin.
Grandkids.
Grandkids, yeah, grandkids. There you go. Next item on the agenda is our annual Holland Report. Mr. Corbin Stone?
Chairman, board members, thanks. Thanks for having me. You should have received, I think, last week, a copy of the financial report. It's, I think, it's a hundred and fifty-six pages, a hundred and forty-six pages. We're not going to go through every page of that document. I did bring the Cliff Notes with me, as I usually do. One item of note in the audit report, we do have a, a note that we didn't include the Apex Center this year. Their audit is still underway. We include some of their financial information within your report, just on two pages, actually. That, that information's been omitted pending completion of their audit report. So, but other than that, the audit went very well. I say other than that, actually, that, that audit went very well, too. We're just finishing it up. And particularly given that we were in the middle of a pandemic, we're still in the middle of a pandemic. I think your staff did a wonderful job in getting information to us. When we asked for something, they provided it. We didn't run into any trouble with the audit, and it's really a, a testament to your staff to, to gather enough information that we can put together this hundred and forty-six page document. If you go to page one, we'll kind of go over some of the, the key numbers in the audit report. Fund balance, and we've got up at the top for your governmental funds, we're including the Capital Projects Fund and the General Fund, end of the year combined at fifty-seven million dollars. Excuse me. The General Fund portion of that was about forty-eight million dollars, and then that first yellow line that gives you the General Fund breakdown, you can see the, the unrestricted funds at forty-three million dollars at the end of twenty twenty-one. That would not include any ARPA funds that you might have received right before year-end. We actually will not show those as revenue until you have allowable expenditures, which are going to occur probably in, in this current year or, or next year. Long-term obligations, you can see you ended the year, the governmental activities, that's basically the General Fund, if you will, at fifty-five million dollars. The enterprise fund net position stood at twenty-eight point five million dollars, and to explain net position to you, when we talk about fund balance for the General Fund, we're talking short-term assets minus short-term liabilities. So that's cash, accounts receivable, your normal accounts payable. We would not deduct your long-term obligations, such as long-term debts or pension liabilities. And in your assets, we also would not include things like this building capital assets. So fund balance is almost a cash basis measurement. When we look at water and sewer funds, though, we take all their assets minus all the liabilities. So we're taking all the lines you have in the ground, the depreciated value of those lines, less all the outstanding liabilities. Of course, we still include cash in the asset number, and so this net position number is just a net. Your assets, that's the systems minus all the liabilities. Long-term obligations for enterprise funds, so you can kind of back into what your assets were there, but long-term obligations for enterprise funds stood at twenty-four million dollars. So if you add the twenty-eight plus the twenty-four, that's, that's how much you have in assets, essentially. School board long-term obligation stood at forty-six million dollars. That's that second green line down, and that's primarily going to be pension liabilities. Pension or post-employment liabilities for school teachers that haven't been funded enough, and so they're, they're showing a deficit. Long-term obligations for the county and school boards stood at a hundred and twenty-five million dollars. That's going to include the county's pension liabilities, basically all the long-term liabilities that you have, all debt, pension liabilities, post-employment liabilities. On a per capita basis, that gray line shows you that you're at four thousand four hundred and five dollars. On a per capita basis, your long-term liabilities. When we compare that to all other counties around the state from last year, they were at about sixty-two hundred dollars, actually sixty-one ninety-eight. So your long-term liabilities on a per capita basis are actually lower than the state averages. A lot of numbers on that page, a lot of big numbers on that page, but I'll, I'll stop and answer any questions that anybody might have real quick before we flip to the next page.
Anybody have any questions?
The next page, this is kind of when we take that fund balance, remember I said fund balance is almost a cash basis of accounting. I want to compare that against your long-term obligations over time, because even though fund balance might be growing, these long-term obligations may be offsetting that. And you can see, yours are kind of trending together. So we don't, while we've got growth in fund balance, we also have some growth in those long-term obligations. That's nothing to be concerned about if we saw a divergence. In other words, if long-term obligations are going up and that fund balance is going down, then that would be cause for concern, particularly if we had four- or five-year trend that would indicate a divergence in those two items. But overall, this, this chart looks good to me.
And Mr. Stone, just clarification, this long-term obligation here is not including the, uh...
The school board.
The school board and, uh, pension liability with it.
Right. This includes just, I think, your pension liabilities, does not include water and sewer debt or school board obligations. So this is just taking your general fund balance and, and comparing that against the general fund liabilities, which since everything, everything kind of flows out of the general fund, so that's what we, we kind of focus in on. The next page, it shows the, the net pension of the water and sewer funds at the end of the year. I'm not too concerned, you know, you still have twenty-eight point five million dollars in net position, even though we've had a slight decline since two thousand and nineteen. That's largely due to depreciation charges on your, your water and sewer systems. We take depreciation every year, so it's not that cash balances are changing significantly. So I'm not really concerned about this decline. I think the next page, page four, really gives you some good information here. And, and I'll start with that green line that's just below the five million dollar mark. You can see that is Commonwealth revenue, taxes, and shared expenses. In other words, those are taxes that are collected by the Commonwealth or remitted to the, to the county, and shared expenses, so that's the, the, the comp board payments for the treasurer and the sheriff and so forth. What's interesting about that line to me, and probably to everybody else, we go all the way back to two thousand and seven, and it just hasn't moved. It's been at the same level since two thousand and seven. It's just, so basically, flat funding from the state, or at least in those two areas. Commonwealth grants, categorical aid, that means it's for a specific purpose, like social services or something like that, and possibly capital grants, economic development. You can see, that's been pretty steady, too. We had a spike in two thousand and eleven. I am, I'm guessing that was probably some sort of economic development grant that was received. What really stands out in those general property taxes, that they're really carrying the day for the county. So if your state funding's not going up, your federal funding's not going up, although we had a big spike this year because of the CARES Act, then ultimately, it falls on the local government and those general property taxes. You can see the federal aid is kind of the blue line with the squares towards the bottom, and it was actually higher in two thousand and seven than it was in two thousand and twenty. Then we got kind of a bump because of the CARES Act. So this tells you what pretty much, you've already figured out, that there's more and more demand on local, for local dollars than there, you know, there's more, I guess, supply. You're going to have to use more local dollars probably going forward. This trend's likely to continue, I guess. Particularly, once we get past COVID, we would expect federal aid to, to drop. At some point, they've got to, got to pay for this. The next page, on page five, we're just showing your assessments for each year. These are your assessed values. Pretty good trends here. You've got a pretty strong trend, actually, a very strong trend in public safety, I mean, sorry, public service corporations. Personal property and real estate are both trending upward. I expect real estate will probably move upward even more in the next, next few years, as we've seen a significant increase in assessed values just about everywhere, or I should say, sales prices just about everywhere. And then the next page, just to give you an idea of what the, the school's dealing with, kind of their revenue sources. You can see, what's interesting to me on, on this graph, that top line, that's revenue from the Commonwealth. We spiked in two thousand and nine, and we just got above those levels here in two thousand and twenty-one. That spike was really right at the, at the tail end of, or really right at the end of the, the Great Recession. Federal aid down at the bottom, it's kind of that blue line, kind of light blue line at the bottom. You can see, we had a spike in two thousand and ten. That is, you know, additional aid because of the Great Recession, and then it kind of fell back down. And then, of course, we have another spike in twenty twenty-one, and that's essentially CARES Act money being received by the school board. The next page are our management comments, our recommendations from the audit. Nothing really significant here. I'm not going to go over them unless there are questions. Like I said, overall, the audit went very well. Your staff was very responsive. I can tell you, I hear from Regina pretty often, I would say, and that's a good sign for us, because she wants to know how to do things the right way, and if she's reaching out and asking us questions here in the year, then we can, we can get something solved before there's a problem later on. And then pages nine through the rest of the report is our letter to those charged with governance. If we ran into any problems during the audit, we would let you know about it here. You guys get the boilerplate letter, because we didn't run into any problems, but we also, and we also include the adjusting entries as part of that letter, so you can see what recommended adjustments we had to the books at the end of the year. Again, I'll, I'll stop there and try to answer any questions that you might have, and like I said, we were very pleased, particularly given that we were still in a pandemic with how the audit went this year.
Mr. Stone, on page eight, you noted that a check was issued to a construction company by the school board prior to June the thirtieth, twenty twenty-one, and it was still being held as of November twenty twenty-one pending completion of the project.
Yeah, we don't like for people to do that. So...
Is that something they were trying to do to get it in before the end of the fiscal year, or...
It, it's tough to say. You know, I don't know if, if they had gotten the invoice, written the check, and then they went out and looked at the project and realized that the punch list hadn't been completed. But typically, we would say if that happens, you want to avoid that check and then wait until, you know, until the contractor has performed to, to reissue it. So, but yeah, you, you shouldn't hold checks, obviously, but there's a risk of loss when you do that. What happens if you lose that check? There's a risk you could lose it. There's a risk somebody could sign the back of it and go deposit it. So we don't like checks hanging out in drawers anywhere. But that shouldn't happen.
And going back to your, um, on page four, and I heard in twelve months, I won't be able to say this, but this is my annual statement that you think a state with a two-point-six billion surplus, you can see that bottom line of the Commonwealth, maybe wiggle a little bit.
I'm, I'm kind of hoping this graph makes it to Richmond at some point, because I, I, I agree. I think we're...
We're going, we're going in a week or so. If you've got an extra copy, I'll drop it off for you.
I, I hope, I wish you would. I think that's something I'm trying to point, you know, let's, let's say expenses go up by three percent one year. Well, if half your funding is coming from, this is hypothetical, if half your funding's coming from the state, and that doesn't go up, that funding doesn't go up, then those local dollars have to increase by six percent to cover that three percent increase in your expenditures, just as an example. And that's what you've got here. And over long periods of time, if you don't have an increase in a revenue, then that means other revenues have to make up more and more of the difference. So you can see, the general property taxes have probably gone from thirteen, fourteen million dollars here to twenty-three, and that's, that's exactly what's happening.
Well, I know we've got three constitutional officers in the audience, the sheriff, the treasurer, the commissioner of revenue. I'd let them come up and give their opinion on that. Might get out of here in decent time. I, I'm sure they're shaking their head the same way I am when we talk about this, as well as Ms. Arish and BSS. Like I said, I hope in twelve months not to give my annual statement about my disappointment with the Commonwealth funding.
Well, feel free to carry this to Richmond. You have, you have my permission to use it as you would like, so. But I'll stop there if there are any other, any other questions.
Anybody have any questions for Mr. Stone? Thank you.
Thank you.
I, I'll, I say it every year, you might make this interesting, but I mean, you do a good job with the presentation. It's, um...
I appreciate it.
And I know it's, it's dry material, but it's, as long as you don't come in here and tell us we're broke.
No, you guys are doing a good job.
I, I met with Mr. Stone last week. We reviewed the audit. We talked about expenses. As you see, obviously, we've got a, a big jump in general fund, but also last year, y'all may remember from our year-end report, we had about four-point-seven million dollars in expenditures that we didn't, didn't spend just on the general budget, not even talking about capital improvements and things last year. Of course, the school was one-point-five million of that and some other things, so not spending all that money is where you see most of the growth coming in our general fund this year. Explained to him what we're looking at borrowing with the up to twelve million for the school project, where we're going with it. While the rates are still good, good time to do it. Put that out there. We've also gone over with what we're aiming to do with our Blue
We've also gone over with what we're aiming to do with our Blue Star project and how we're looking at it, just to make certain we don't seem to be making any missteps there. So I appreciate his guidance and talking to us about that. Absolutely, yeah. I think it rates, I think we all know rates are probably headed up to fight this inflation that we're starting to see. So, yeah, to the extent you're gonna issue debt anytime soon, I would do it sooner rather than later. So, and that's that.
Well, thank you, Mr. Stone.
I'm at, thank you. I will remind you, my contact information's on the front page there. Any member of this board can contact me. I would say at any time, but I have gotten phone calls at 11 o'clock and 12 o'clock at night, so. But please don't hesitate to reach out and call me, or email me with any questions that you have. We're here to support this board any way we can, so. Steven knows this, but don't worry about getting a bill the next day. We're here to help you, so. Thank you, sir.
Thank you, sir. The next item on our agenda is Lead Mines Rescue Squad Report, but I don't believe Mr. Jackson was able to come, so move on to the spotted lanternfly presentation, which will be virtually.
Yes, good evening. Can you hear me okay?
We're good. We will...
All right, so are we ready to go on Spotted Lanternfly?
Sure.
Fantastic. Well, what I'll do, if I can, I'll go ahead and share my screen with my presentation, and let me know if you can see that screen.
We can.
Fantastic, wonderful. All right, well, I don't want to waste anyone's time, so I'll just jump right into it. Thank you all for letting me come and speak to you all this evening. First of all, my name is David Janino. I am the program manager for the Office of my Industry Services, and we handle invasive insect programs, invasive trapping for invasive species across the Commonwealth. And tonight, I just want to share some information about spotted lanternfly in Virginia, particularly wanted to provide some information about what counties can do in localities, and this is in reference to a recent population that was founded with County. So I'll go ahead and get started. Spotted lanternfly is an invasive insect. It was brought over in about 2014, originating in China, and it is an agricultural pest. It tends to feed on apples. As you can see here, a large swarm of spotted lanternfly in the fall. They're heavy feeders, so they will feed a lot on flowering material, which can negatively impact the quality of the fruit that we produce, both on apples and grapes, as pictured here. And you can see that as the adult fly, it's actually a plant hopper, it's not a fly, but it does have a very long proboscis, which is a piercing, sucking mouth part, and it will negatively affect the yield of the fruit, and it will also negatively impact the longevity of those trees and vines with multiple years of feeding. Another reason we are concerned about this pest is it has a lot of other business implications. So it's a good hitchhiking pest. It jumps onto vehicles, trucks, it lays its egg, rusted metal, wood, anything that kind of sits outside during the egg laying period, so it can get moved around a lot. And most bugs and most invasive pests tend to have one host, and we can kind of control it through identifying those pathways, but this pest has a lot of pathways that it gets around on. Another concern that we have here is it's a nuisance pest for homeowners and landowners. And what we're seeing now with populations in northern Virginia are we are getting to the point where it is becoming a nuisance. We have large populations of insects on trees outside of hospitals. They're flying into people's faces. They're completely ruminating people's backyards, their decks. It's really impacting negatively the outdoor experience for Virginia citizens. So as you can see, just super high numbers of this pest on trees. It'll be outside near your playpen for children, or on your deck, wherever you want to try and relax and enjoy. And then lastly, again, another big concern is our agro-tourism industry. So as it negatively impacts our outdoor experience, and also impacts our agricultural sectors, we can also expect to see a lot of negative impacts to vineyards, wineries, or even places like where you would go to cut Christmas trees if there is a very large population there. So those are just an overview of why we're concerned about this bug. So just a real quick update on where we are in Virginia with this pest. This picture here on the right was taken in Winchester in 2020. This was after a tree had been treated with systemic insecticide, and you can see just the sheer number of insects coming off that tree. So we do have high populations in localized areas. I'll get to the distribution soon of where it is in the state. And not every location looks like this, but this was three years after that bug being in the area. So very rapidly, it can have very large populations. How's the bug getting around? It's moving along transportation corridors, so railroads, interstate, being moved by homeowners, on cars, on trailers. It's very good hitchhiker, and again, because it can lay its egg masses on solid surfaces, it's moving around in ways that we have a very hard time regulating. Another one that we've seen a lot of impact is visitors from out of state. So when we talk about where spotted lanternfly is in the U.S., there are other states, Pennsylvania is of note, because it has the largest population and distribution of spotted lanternfly. We have a lot of visitors up and down the Shenandoah Valley, farmers' markets, we have a really great park system in some of the Appalachian Mountains, so we have a lot of visitors in Virginia, and we have seen out-of-state visitors bring this insect into the state. I'm not gonna go too terribly much into the big history, but I do want to say that it was brought into the U.S. in 2014 in Pennsylvania, and Winchester, Virginia, received a shipment of stone from that area in 2018. By the end of 2018, this was the distribution that we knew of spotted lanternfly in Virginia. And just in a few years, so 2021, this is updated as of yesterday, these are the counties of where we have found spotted lanternfly with associated positive points with these red diamonds. And you can see at the very bottom there, in the circle, is a population founded with County. The good news, it's very isolated so far as what we found. We recently, one of our plant protection inspectors had found, just by doing some surveys, some egg masses located on trees at a Flying J truck stop. He very swiftly had removed and scraped and smashed all the egg masses that he could find. It's, we're doing more surveys there, and we haven't found more, but it's likely that there could be more egg masses in that area, but we are gonna continue to work on that site and survey, and making sure we're doing everything we can. The big reason I'm trying to bring this information to the board supervisors today is really to just bring awareness to the pest, bring the concept of the fact that it's there in with County, and, you know, VDEX is gonna do everything in its power to prevent that population from booming, but as you saw in this previous picture, it's moving and growing in population despite our efforts, so. As I mentioned, we do have a program. So Virginia Department of Agriculture is partnered with the United States Department of Agriculture, and so, and a couple of other agencies and partners like Virginia Tech, Virginia Cooperative Extension. And what we're doing is we're trying to utilize a diverse management strategy. So throughout the year, we're surveying, we're conducting treatments, we're working with landowners, we're working with localities on providing training. We also have a quarantine, which I'll get into in a minute. But all of these things kind of make up this diverse management strategy for the pest. And as I mentioned, we do have an established spotted lanternfly quarantine, and before I scare everybody in the room, with County is not under the quarantine. I'll go into that in a little bit here. But again, it's a cooperative effort. We work with everybody. We try to provide resources to all of our partners, and, you know, whether that's staffing or treatments or educational material, we try our best to make sure we're providing as cooperative a program as we can. Just a quick touch on the quarantine. The counties that have been quarantined and are currently under quarantine are Frederick Clark and Warren. Those are the most northern region counties in the state, and have the highest population of spotted lanternfly in the state. We do not have current plans to expand the quarantine. We're still trying to grapple with how much spread we've had this past year, and where to really focus that. We try to target those counties with transportation outside, lots of movement of product out, because we want to make sure our Virginia businesses are able to move stuff out without negatively spreading spotted lanternfly further. The quarantine requires that businesses that are moving articles, they have to be permitted, and we do think that having the quarantine there in Frederick and Clark has been vital to slow down the spread. Again, we've had a lot of spread this year. However, we have a lot of businesses and homeowners that are engaged up in that quarantine area. They know what to look for, the businesses are getting permitted, there's education there. So this is just, I have some information here on permitting, but I'm not gonna spend a ton of time on this, because it's not terribly applicable for with County, but I just wanted to show what the current distribution of spotted lanternfly is in the U.S. This is the most updated map of the known populations. And I'll go ahead and just kind of skip through this, because I don't want to spend too much time on it. If you have questions about permitting, I'd be happy to talk about it. But really, this slide right here is probably gonna be the most important for you all, what are we looking for, or what sort of things can localities do regarding spotted lanternfly? You know, invasive insects, they tend to kind of jump up on us, and whether or not we have resources to handle them. If nothing else, at least you all can be aware, engaged, and know what the processes that we're hoping to address the spread is. So the best thing is really, is really detection, rapid response. The faster that we can get up to these sites, whether that's permission on county land or ability to treat, you know, faster reporting when it's found, it's, you know, we don't wait on it, the better off we'll be. There are best management practices, so we have all those available on our website. Same thing for Virginia Tech. You know, if there are county sites or compliance with quarantines, we really recommend that counties follow those. And then also, working with VDEX staff to let us conduct surveys and treatments, as I mentioned, on county-owned lands. And then we have a lot of outreach available for spotted lanternfly, and then we'd be happy to train any county staff on how to identify for spotted lanternfly, what they're looking for, how to treat those pests. We would help out and provide any sort of training that's needed. We also have a training online through Virginia Tech that could provide that sort of overview. And really, the best help here is having a county contact person for VDEX field staff or myself. So currently, we don't have a field supervisor, we just lost them recently, but myself or another person in the agency would be happy to be that counterperson in VDEX regarding spotted lanternfly. Again, I mentioned the partners earlier before. We see all of our localities as big partners and really want to work closely with them, provide support or communication. So that's really a very brief overview. I tried to stick within the 10 minutes. I hope I didn't go too fast, but, you know, I can certainly answer any questions, and just really want to be a resource for you all if you have concerns about spotted lanternfly or what we can do to work cooperatively together. So with that, I'll wrap it up and answer any questions, and I'll leave this contact page up if there are questions.
Do you, you talked about the extension office. Have you spoke to anyone with our extension office?
So, yeah, it's a good question. We have, we have some extension partners that we've worked with, and we send out notifications to the extension agents wherever we find spotted lanternfly. This fine down here in with County is very recent, end of December, so we have not made that contact yet, but we're planning on doing so very soon.
And I guess my follow-up question would be, you know, we, I don't know who your, our county contact person would be, but I would say with our limited number of staff, that our extension agent would probably be the best bet. I don't know, I'll refer to Mr. Barrett or administrator, I don't know.
I would concur. Working with Mr. Miller and the staff from extension would be, they would be the ones I would most recommend, and then they can work with whoever the agricultural producers or whoever in the process. I think that's the best way. We'll certainly share the information on our sites, but I think that'd be good.
I mean, as far as what you said about having access to county land, I don't think you're gonna get any objections from us. If that's what, if that's what you need, I've done a little research on it, and it's something we definitely don't want here, but if you look at the ways that it travels, I'm kind of surprised it's not been here before.
Yes, sir. That is, we find that very routinely, where we get to a location, either from a report or from a survey, and, you know, we find it, and then very shortly after, we discover that it's either been there longer than we had anticipated, or as it looks. What we try to do is, after, after a fall season, winter season, we try to get back to these outlined populations early in spring and treat hard and heavy. So that with County site, the Flying J, we plan to do further delimiting surveys, you know, going out from that one spot to make sure we've identified if there are any other positives, and we're gonna, our plan is, we're gonna partner with USDA, go back and do some really heavy treatments with contact and systemic insecticides. So I can certainly follow up with, you said Mr. Miller would be probably the best contact with your county extension office. And, yeah, our, all of our information is on VDEX, and we definitely don't want that bug to stay there with County. We don't want it, we don't want it in Virginia, but we're also realizing that it's very difficult. Invasive insects are very hard, and this one is very difficult to manage, so.
Does anybody else have any questions? All right, thank you, sir.
Absolutely. Thank you all for your time, and I'll go ahead and stop sharing. And yes, certainly, if you all have any other questions, I can make myself available, but I hope you all have a great evening.
Thank you, you too.
Thank you.
Moving on to the agenda, the next item is the local law enforcement block grant. Mr. Barrett?
Make a recommendation that you all approve, grant and authorize staff to sign.
Entertain a motion to approve the grant and authorize county staff to sign for it. Have a motion by Mr. Cook, do I have a second?
Second.
Have a second by Mr. Burnett.
Sorry.
Is there any questions or discussion? Here and there, we'll do a roll call vote, start with Mr. Horni.
Aye.
Off stage.
Aye.
Aye. So approved. You have anything else under new business, Mr. Barrett?
No, sir.
Sheriff, you have anything? Ms. Vault, you have anything?
No, no. I don't have any questions.
I don't know how much you'd like to come up here and speak.
Well, just on Ms. Vault, we are advertising a position. We do need administrative assistant help with the Board of Equalization to schedule the appointments and do that, so if you see that advertisement out there, that's what that is. If y'all have any one looking to spend a month or two part-time helping pull records and schedule those appointments, please have them contact Ms. Vault, so we can fill out an application and get somebody in there.
Thank you, ma'am. Move on to staff reports. Mr. Hankins?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman, members of the board. I'll be brief tonight. The broadband update, I just want to reiterate, you've heard this before, but I still get questions, so I'll take this opportunity to reiterate for folks that the broadband award has been made to the Mount Rogers Planning District Commission, not to with County. It's for a project that will serve with Smith and Washington Counties. The company will have 24 months from the time that contract is awarded by the Department of Housing and Community Development to develop and roll out the entire broadband project. So it's a pretty aggressive schedule. They're trying to be even more aggressive by bringing in some national contractors to help roll that fiber out. So if people will see fiber rolling out in with County this year, it's just gonna depend on how quickly they can roll that out and where they can get it rolled out, as to when service is gonna start for folks. There are gonna be some areas in the county where there is overlap. So for instance, my house, I'm served by Citizens Co-op. uh, but that area is also going to have point broadband going by it. So, I will have a choice. So there will be some of those areas that are going to be served by two providers. It won't be a lot of areas, but, uh, i- if you've already got somebody in your neighborhood not named Century Link, um, you know, then there, there's going to be some competition even for, you know, those that are providing higher speeds now. So, uh, that's a good thing for With County. We want as much competition as we can get in this market space. It's something that you don't see very often, so, um, any questions about broadband? Because I know you're probably getting them, I'm getting them just about every day. If not, we are working on, uh, we, we've got a bunch of procurement, so you'll see a lot of requests for proposals and request, request for qualifications, uh, going out on the county website. Uh, one went up today for commercial real estate services, and you're aware of that project. Uh, we have several others, uh, procurement went out last week for sewer pipe for, uh, Progress Park. The, the state has changed its e-Virginia procurement system. Uh, they're, they're, they're getting ready to do a major switch over in May, but we're having to do an interim solution and, um, they had to give me some permissions. Uh, they, they managed to do that on Friday, so, um, I'm still trying to get some of these procurements out there, rolled out to the, the state website, but they should be out this week. Uh, I've been out for a couple of days with strep throat, uh, and I'm not contagious, I promise. We are doing a lot to, uh, track, uh, legislation. Uh, as you know, this time of year, there's, there's always legislation and there's always something that slips by and surprises us and then we ask ourselves, why didn't we know about that? So, we're, uh, doing some legislative tracking along with, um, our, our partners at, uh, VML and VACO who always do a really good job of trying to catch some of those major items and, and keep us from being surprised. Uh, you see in front of you the, uh, response that we sent to, uh, the Department of Wildlife Resources, uh, about the rural retreat lake lease. It is as good as my degree from Emory and Henry Law School will get, so, uh, but I thought that would at least get a chuckle from Scott. So if you have any questions about that, uh, they, they have said, they have received it and they, they will take it back and review it both with, uh, department staff and with the Office of the Attorney General. So hopefully it won't take five years this time.
Just to be on the safe side, did we send this to our delegates and senators?
Um, we did not, but I'll be glad to copy them, uh, as well.
Yeah, I mean, I, I want to hope for the best, but it's been five years, so.
It, it's always had, good to have somebody else riding with you, so we, we'll do our, our best to get that out to them this week. And then just my last thing is fire apparatus updates, uh, in case you're getting questions from your departments. Um, Ivanhoe, we have the pumper tanker waiting across the street. It's been waiting on a drop tank, um, it's, uh, been getting its radio over the last week, uh, as, uh, we've had the opportunity to do that. Uh, it's got to get license plate brackets and a couple of other small things, uh, but, um, the, the big hangup has been the drop tank. It's being manufactured by the same company that makes the fire trucks. Um, if we can get one that will fit the space that it's commercially made, um, we'll, we'll do that faster and just ask them for a credit and, um, we'll try to get that truck out to Ivanhoe as quickly as we can. Uh, we don't want to sit in there in the weather, uh, much longer if we can help it. And this year's purchase, we've also, uh, got a brush truck coming for Ivanhoe. Um, this truck has been delayed because of the, uh, chip shortage, uh, for trucks, but the chassis was delivered late last week and construction is already underway on that. Uh, it's a much faster, uh, delivery because they were able to pre-manufacture the, the box. So it's basically going to be fitting the box to the chassis, doing the wiring and plumbing. So it should be a fairly quick build, they're expecting, uh, possibly as soon as late February. The speedwell pumper tanker, um, that is another one that, that's had an issue with, uh, the, the chip shortage, uh, but the chassis was delivered this week according to the manufacturer. So, uh, we're expecting that, uh, uh, that they've already moved a couple of projects out of the way of this truck, so we're expecting them to, uh, make some progress on it. I expect it to probably be at least a four to six week build, uh, so we should see it in March. So, uh, that, that's my expectation. Uh, they say they have all the other parts necessary for that truck. It's just getting the assembly done, getting the wiring and the plumbing done and getting it back, uh, or getting it on the road. The incident command trailer has been delivered, uh, most of you have had the opportunity to see it and tour it. Um, and then the lead mines rock boat, uh, the deposit's been made. We've received the donor funds that were given to the rescue squad for that truck. They, they turned those funds over to us, uh, to use to, to pay. And, uh, production will continue through the spring. We're, we're hoping to see a late spring delivery on it. And that's my report.
Does anybody have any questions for Mr. Hankins? Move on to county administrator, Mr. Barrett.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Um, most of the items here are, are informational, um, STS, the, uh, uh, manufacturer of the, uh, product for Volvo, um, that we've been working with for quite a while, has actually, um, uh, they actually have surveyors out on site and, uh, we are working with them trying to finalize, uh, the lot. And, uh, Mr. Manley and I were talking today. Uh, we had actually hoped to have a, uh, performance agreement ready for you all to review, to email you today and review tonight. Uh, it is not finalized yet, but the February eighth meeting, you should have a performance agreement with STS, uh, to be reviewing and execute on it. Um, in addition, I have listed a long list of items that are going on with, uh, Blue Star, um, right now. Um, we also would like at the February eighth meeting to, uh, have the Blue Star, uh, performance agreement finalized and for you all to review. Uh, the, uh, CEO and CFO of Blue Star are actually in town today. Uh, I ended up meeting with them earlier. Uh, we have a meeting with their consulting engineers tomorrow, reviewing the, the status of the project and, and the things that are going, ongoing. Mr. Hankins mentioned an RFP out for some sewer pipe. We've got some RFPs, uh, going out also for professional services out there. So, a lot of things continuing to move on it. And, uh, hopefully in addition to performance agreement, uh, we'll have the plot and the, uh, the, the lay-in ready to also be conveyed to the JIDA at our next meeting, uh, to be conveyed to them also. So, glad to answer any questions that you all might have about STS or Blue Star, either one.
Any other questions?
The, uh, last item on the agenda that I, under my report is the Maximeta sanitary sewer evaluation. Uh, Zach with Thrasher is actually here today. Uh, we're working out, uh, engineering agreements with about everybody, it seems like right now. Um, we actually reviewed this, uh, today. Mr. Crisp did send me a, uh, final copy of it. Um, however, due to my other unplanned meetings with Blue Star and others, I was not able to, to bring those copies to you all tonight. Um, so they will be on your February eighth. I will go ahead and email a copy of that for you all to review. Uh, but staff does recommend going ahead and entering into the sanitary sewer evaluation with, uh, Thrasher. Um, it is, uh, the total fee for the basic services, a hundred and ten thousand dollars. What we want to do is get this project started as soon as possible. And this is where they previously did the sanitary sewer evaluation and showed all the leaks, the manholes, the areas that needed, uh, to be addressed where we had all the infiltration, uh, that's been presented and you all recommended the options to proceed with. This provides all the engineering to go with it. It also provides, uh, sixty-five thousand dollars in, um, I'll call it management or oversight fees during the construction of it. Uh, and then in addition, there is, um, twenty-five thousand dollars between funding and construction stakeout and assistance with funding applications on this, which we did receive an offer of one point two million at zero percent interest for thirty years on this. So, uh, they will be assisting us with that. But, um, unless you all want to go ahead and authorize staff to sign the agreement, uh, for those amounts, but otherwise we'll have it on your February eighth agenda for you all, uh, to move forward with.
How long are we locked in with that evidence?
Thirty years.
Oh, but I mean, how long do we have for it to execute it?
Uh, they made the offer to us, we've got, I, I don't remember its cutoff time on it or not.
Yeah.
Yeah. It's, it's offered and we just have to finalize the, the paperwork and get the application in to go with it.
So we won't lose it if it's next week?
No, but if we wanted to proceed and move ahead, unless y'all have any questions, y'all want to see.
Is zero percent interest?
Zero percent interest, yeah.
Yeah, yeah.
That's what I'm.
That, that's true, I was just, I was waiting for somebody to jump on and make that motion.
I'll make it.
Second. Motion by Mr. Cook and a second by Mr. Smith. Is there any questions or discussion?
Ms. Collins, that is a motion to approve the, uh, engineering agreement with Thrasher for the sanitary sewer evaluation.
Here and then we'll do a roll call vote, Mr. Terry.
Aye.
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 So approved.
That's all I have, Mr. Chairman.
See, when you say zero percent interest, you're the action. Does anybody have anything for Mr. Barrett? Moving on to county attorney, Mr. Ford.
Uh, Mr. Chairman, I don't have anything to report. I, you know, meet with Mr. Barrett almost weekly. We work on different, various projects, uh, lately with Progress Park, a few things, uh, and as things come up, we try to address that. But if there's anything you guys have for me, I'm happy to try to answer any questions. But all is well on the attorney front for now.
I don't ever say that.
With that being said, and he reminded me, I do want to let you all know, um, I signed an access agreement since we were not able to convey lot twenty-four to, um, Blue Star, since we're finalizing the paperwork. They have awarded the contract, they have gotten their stormwater management plan approved. They've got some final I's to cross, not and T's to cross with that, but it, it is approved by the state. But they have awarded the grading contract. I may say it wrong, but I think it's Tri Diamond Bar or something like that. Um, they're a, out of, uh, Walla Walla, Washington, uh, but they wanted to start moving equipment on site and start getting ready to do their grading. I see no reason to slow the process down. We signed a, an agreement, Scott reviewed the agreement, basically giving them access to get on site, start putting their construction trailers and do work. But I wanted to let the board know, uh, that I did do that and they have started moving equipment on site.
Thank you, sir. Next item on the agenda is board reports. Um, we'll start with Buildings and Grounds Committee.
The Building and Grounds Committee met on January nineteenth, twenty twenty-two and makes the following recommendation. Committee recommends that the board chairman and, and county administrator be authorized to sign necessary paperwork for acquisition of property located in Withfield Town Limits, West Withfield Magistorial District.
County committee doesn't need a second, is there any questions or discussion? Here and then we'll do a roll call vote, Mr. Horny.
Aye.
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 So approved.
The next recommendation, the committee recommended that the board supervisors authorize payment of overtime in lieu of compensatory time in situations where inclement weather requires overtime for the clearing of roads and sidewalks.
Mr. Barrett, you want to explain that a little bit?
Yeah, basically, um, you all typically have not budgeted nor do we budget for, for any of our departments overtime pay, with the exception of, um, water, uh, depart, Water and Wastewater Department for the county where they have called out some things that we pay overtime. Typically, what happens is, um, if, if they work overtime, they work two hours overtime and they're allotted three hours of compensatory time that they're allowed to take off. As you're aware, our Buildings and Grounds Department doesn't have a tremendous amount of staff as it is. We're working on several projects. And when inclement weather comes in, they can, they can be in here on the weekends. They've got to come in and, and scrape for the dispatch center and, and other offices here as well. So what this does is just you all authorizing us to, uh, pay them, uh, overtime funds when it's, uh, situations that they work for inclement weather. And, uh, no money needs to be appropriated. Mr. Bowers has some money in his budget that he's going to move around to help cover these costs.
County committee doesn't need a second, is there any questions or discussion? Here and then we'll do a roll call vote, Mr. Terry.
Aye.
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 So approved. Anything else from Buildings and Grounds Committee?
No, sir, that's it.
Moving on to board supervisors' time, Mr. Terry, I'll start with you since you're on the phone.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman, I have two things real quick. Uh, the first one is follow, a follow-up from our previous meeting. Um, the, uh, Fire Rescue Committee meeting, whether we met, they had some concerns with, uh, the fire departments and rescue squad about Castleton Road. And I know Mr. Barrett had tried to reach out to Mr. Fowler on this, Chris, if you had an update that I could take back to those boys and girls, please, sir.
Uh, Mr. Fowler did indicate, did receive the information, it didn't indicate they would, uh, review it. Uh, I have not received confirmation from him that it has been resolved, but I will follow up with him again and see.
Absolutely perfect, sir, thank you very much. And the second thing I have, Mr. Chairman, is just a follow-up. I know, I think it was two meetings ago, we discussed potentially making some investments in our radio system. Um, and I was just, I wanted to know if we had made any progress, if we've talked to anybody about the potential, about where we need to go and how we need to move forward with that. We'd kind of like to see that project stay front and center. We hear a lot of radio, uh, a lot of, uh, complaints from the Fire and Rescue Department with the radio system. So I would like to try to see if we can keep that moving forward at a pretty good pace if we could, sir.
Due to the, uh, size of the project, it'll have to go out for competitive bidding and we've prepared.
Yes, sir.
We, we've prepared an RFP, uh, that should go out this week. Uh, one of the difficulties has been in figuring out what we don't know, uh, so it's a pretty broad RFP. Uh, we'll probably wind up having to meet with some, anybody who makes a proposal, uh, to, uh, see what they want to do to engineer improvements to the system. Uh, but we are trying to make it move as quick as we can.
You're a good man, Mr. Hankins, thank you, sir. And that's all I have tonight, thank you very much.
Thank you, Mr. Terry, Mr. Cook.
Uh, I've only received one call over the past couple of weeks and it was on a road that they're wanting to, uh, get state-maintained. I've asked Mr. Barrett, take, take a look at it, he's doing that. I'm happy to report that I assume that you got to talk to the green box people because I have not gotten any more complaints about the green box out there on fifty-two. Man, it, it, it seems to be worked because there were a whole lot of complaints coming in prior. So, the fact that we're not getting any says that whatever you did apparently has worked.
We, we have done so and it, and if anybody gets anything on any of them, please let us know. Shoot, shoot me an email immediately and we will work with them.
Anything else?
That is all I have, sir.
Mr. Burnett.
I've only had two phone calls. I would like to, uh, to Mr. Barrett, I appreciate him resolving the Paine Town Road with VDOT needing to scrape it for snow removal. And, uh, Mrs. Alex Van Der certainly appreciated it. And then I had a phone call regarding the Ivanhoe Town appearance, which I'll take under and look at in the future.
Thank you, sir. Mr. Smith.
Got a couple of things, Mr. Chairman. First thing, excuse me. Uh, Mr. Barrett, um, I failed to send this to you and I apologize ahead of time. Uh, but I did get a call about the, the lack of snow removal or, um, attention to Connors Valley Road. Um, the caller was calling on behalf of his sister who, uh, needing medical attention, some dialysis, and they couldn't get in, a transport couldn't get to them, uh, so they was wanting a little more attention paid to that road.
Someone got in touch with me and I did send information to VDOT with that information that there was a medical concern up there. I'll follow up with them as well and see if they would address that like they did with Paine Town and if that's been addressed.
Thank you, sir. Uh, second thing, um, I have got co, uh, calls again about the, uh, wildlife in Progress Park. Uh, they are happy that we did do the quota hunts, uh, they are asking for the total number harvested. I don't know if Kevin has that information, uh, but if you could get that.
I have asked Kevin, I don't think he has it, um, because of the way things were checked. Uh, we'll see what we can get from DWR, but I'm not sure how complete the information's going to be.
Right.
But we'll try to get a, at least a ballpark.
Okay, thank you, sir. Uh, and then, um, we, we may want to check because the individuals are, are talking about their plants, their winter flowers and stuff getting eaten, especially during the snow cover, which I, I get it, they live out on Pepsi Ferry Road and, um, a lot of wildlife's headed that way. But, uh, we may want to work with, uh, Department of Wildlife and see if we can get some de-cap or de-mat tags or kill permits is what they are, uh, and possibly if you need a volunteer for that, um, I know a guy that would volunteer to, to help out. Uh, and then we could look at extend, possibly extend in hunting season. We could also work with the Department of Wildlife and, um, Chris Dawson at Player Lake and kind of mirror something that they use for the lake down there.
Okay.
When they do January, February hunts. and kind of mirror something that they use for the lake down there when they do January, February hunts. And then the last thing I, Mr. Chairman, is, um, Mr. Bear, do we, have we looked at the, the start time or the meeting times for the water committee? I know I failed to make that meeting.
No, I, I, I wanted to get the, the three of you all, uh, to talk about what times work best. Um, afternoons work best for you, between nine and two works best for Gene. So, uh, we need to try to come up with if, if we've got some option or a lunchtime option or something that we can schedule those meetings, um, and, and continue that.
All right. That's all I have, Mr. Chairman.
Thank you, sir. Mr. Horny?
I don't believe I have anything at this time.
I've just got a couple of follow-ups. Uh, one of them was, uh, Mr. Cook, well, with the recycle centers. We talked about putting signs up the recycle center. Haven't seen any movement on that.
Mr. Bowers was working on that. Uh, I have advised him of that and he's working on some type of signage to go up there.
Um, and follow-up from, I guess, several meetings ago, uh, we heard from the Fort Chisel Library folks and they were supposed to afford you some information they said they had for eligibility for grants for that building. Have you got any information?
I am not aware of any information that I've received from the, from Fort Chisel Library about any, any of their activities.
Have you got anything?
No, sir.
Um, and the last thing is, and, and I, I believe I sent it to all the board members. If, if not, I apologize, but, um, I got a, uh, I talked to Mr. Jones, Commonwealth Attorney. You know, we're constantly getting these calls about cattle in the road and fence in, fence out. Uh, the Commonwealth Attorney has gave the opinion that there's a code section that can be used when cattle, um, hit the state maintained road. I know there's a situation out in the code that I've got a complaint about with the same gentleman. The cattle constantly out there. We need to have our animal patrol people enforce that. Now, I'm, you know, I understand mistakes happen, but when it's the same person over and over again, they need to take action.
And Mr. Farthing and I have discussed that, um, part of that comes into getting them this, uh, special police, um, appointment through the sheriff in order for them to be able to write it under the, uh, under that code section for them. Uh, cause they can enforce the animal patrol laws, correct, Mr. Farthing? Uh, but the other, uh, we would have to probably work with the sheriff's office on having them write the ticket under that code section for the livestock in the right way until we get them into these certified positions with the special police. But yes, we, the, I have, we are working on that, uh, and notified them of that.
And it's, you know, there's the whole fence in, fence out debate that, that, you know, we've heard for years. And it's, it doesn't really affect, uh, you know, when they tear somebody's yard up. But, you know, once, once they hit that state maintained highway, it's, uh, you know, happening multiple times a week. Sometimes, yeah, we got a problem, so. That's all I've got. Does anybody else have anything? Ms. Collins? Anybody?
Yes, sir.
All right. We'll be adjourned.